Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the October meeting of Leeds City Council Executive Board. I'll just start by reminding everybody that this meeting has been webcast live and welcome people watching online. I'm going to start with the formal items at the top of the agenda, so item one is appeals against refusal of inspection of documents, please.
Thank you, Chair. To confirm, no appeals have been received ahead of today's meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Item two is exempt information, and there are no exempt items on today's agenda. Item three is late items.
Nothing on that either, Chair, nor late items.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn to the board and see if there's any declarations of interest, please. I don't see any declarations of interest. I'm going to turn to item five, which is the minutes of the meeting in September. Check everybody is happy with those. councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, sorry, I've got two matters arising, Chair, and you'll have to give me a second. I'm memorising the numbers because I've cleverly left my notes upstairs. So someone's very kindly bringing them for me. So I think it's minute twenty-two and forty-five. So the first one was, I asked the Director of Children's Services how many occasions we'd used unregistered children homes, and there was a commitment that that information would be provided as of today. I still haven't had that information provided. So be grateful I could have that, please. And also, which I think is minute forty-five, I'd asked openly if there had been any communication between the Home Office and officers or elected members of this council around Mary Morris House and their proposals for it. And while the Chief Planning Officer confirmed that he hadn't had any contact, it was remiss of me not to come back because I asked more broadly than that if there'd been any communications. So my understanding is there was communications between elected members and officers of the council around that. So I'd be grateful if someone could tell me if I'm wrong on that, and I'd be grateful to know what the nature of those communications were.
Thank you, councillor Lam. First of all, you guessed wrongly on the numbers, but the matters were, and the matters were set out very clearly, and we're not running this as a memory test, so we will come back with those two bits of information for you and myself, and the chief executive will commit to coming back with that information. Okay, with those two points from councillor Lam, is everybody happy with the minutes? That's great, thank you. So we'll move on to the first item on the agenda, first paper on the agenda, which is under the Adult Social Care Active Lifestyles and Culture portfolio, councillor Arif. Is it whether the State of Council Prior is going to take this item? But first of all, we've just got the short clip around Leeds 400 that we'd like to show Executive Board.
Leeds 400. In 1626, under the seal of King Charles I, Leeds was transformed. A town of promise became a borough of power, granted the right to govern, to grow, to shape its own destiny. Now, four hundred years later, we stand at a new threshold. For four centuries, Leeds has been built by makers, dreamers and doers by its people. From the smoke of industry to the light of innovation, from textile mills to digital corridors, from local voices to global impact, Leeds has never stood still. Leeds 400 is not just a celebration, it is a call to action. Through partnerships, we unite across sectors and borders to amplify the cultural heartbeat of our city. By telling Leeds's story, we illuminate its diversity, history and future together. With advocacy, we speak as one, championing the role of culture in every corner of the region. Just as we marked our Tursantenary in 1926 with exhibitions, processions and proud displays of civic pride, so too will we honour this milestone. But Leeds 400 is more than commemoration. It is an invitation, an invitation to look back with gratitude and forward with purpose, to reflect not just on what Leeds was, but on what it will become. Because our story isn't finished, it's just beginning. Leeds.
Thank you. Councillor Prior, please.
Thank you. So yes, in 2026, next year, Leeds will of course be celebrating our four hundred years since Charles I granted our city its royal charter. And this is going to be a defining moment in our journey towards self, this was a defining moment in our journey towards self-government and civic identity. So this report today sets out the proposals for the year-long celebration. It's going to be bringing together communities, cultural organisations and partners to mark this huge milestone. Councillor Dowson is going to be leading this from the political side, and she'll be working to ensure that Leeds 400 really showcases our city's creativity, our heritage, diversity through performances, exhibitions and sport. This report asks us to approve the strategic approach, branding and partnership framework, and to support aligning existing council events with the Leeds 400. It also resolves to formally launch the programme this November, ensuring that every resident has the opportunity to take part in this celebration.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So it's absolutely right that we're celebrating and commemorating the Leeds 400. Few points, so absolutely can I support on doing things. I think the key is to really tell the story of the history of Leeds. And one of the things I think we need to recognise in this is what was the administrative area that was granted the royal charter four hundred years ago, it looks very different today. And lots of those communities that are now part of Leeds were not part of Leeds then, and helping to tell that story over time, I think is crucial and should be a centrepiece of what we're doing. Couple of points hoping to be constructive. Absolute support, has been our principle with these things, that we should do it, we should do it well, but it shouldn't be costing the taxpayers to do it. It does say in the report, it won't cost the council anything. However, reading through it, there's an awful lot of officer time going into it, which I'm assuming that's not being done on a voluntary basis. So it'd be useful to know exactly how many man-hours do we anticipate going into it and what will the cost of that be? Because it doesn't really cost nothing, does it? It's, that's time. You mentioned that councillor Dowson is going to be leading politically. Are there plans for cross-party representation? Because we haven't been asked to provide anything as yet. Thirdly, is there a plan to invite the current King Charles to Leeds to address council as part of this? If there's not, can I suggest that we look to do that? It would seem appropriate on the four hundredth anniversary that we at least offer the invitation for him to come and address us. And just on funding, it would be remiss of me, it jogged my memory when I was reading this. Obviously, the lessons learned from 2023 and the era of culture, we still owed some money from that. Is there an update? Because pretend that I don't, is it still accounted for in the books? Or has it been written off at this point? And if it hasn't been, then there's potentially a bit of a budget there that could go towards supporting these events.
Thank you. Councillor Prior, please.
Always delighted for an early reference to the 1972 Local Government Act in any meeting. Jane, could you address some of the points around officer time? Obviously, we have officers who work on culture kind of every year, and I think that kind of the point of this is we're all pulling in the same direction of this across the city, but perhaps you can elaborate on that.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, councillor Prior. The intention is that part of the Culture Programs team and some of the wider culture service actually just align their existing work programs as part of Leeds 400, so it will be existing resources. And so it's just about how we flex our work programming across those teams. So up to now, it's been myself and a couple of officers within Culture Programs, and then input from wider services across different directorates, which has been really beneficial to where we've got to up to now.
Thank you, councillor Prior and councillor Lam. I can cover some of the other points. So it is existing resource. There is a working group and the Lord Mayor does sit on it, and clearly his portfolio in terms of culture has just been replaced. So councillor Firth will be invited onto that cross-party and cross-city working group too. In terms of invites, we can update you outside of this meeting. And in terms of Leeds 2023, we can update you separately as well on where we are with any underspend, because the books have currently just been reviewed at the moment.
Thank you. Councillor Lam.
Yeah, so there was the points while on inviting the King. And my other question was, are we considering we've left this a bit late in the day to be getting organised? I mean, we've known about it for four hundred years that it was coming up, so. So given that, it's a bit like my approach to planning for Christmas with family, that I always think last Christmas, I really need to get something organised. And then a week or so before, I think, I really, really need to get something organised. And it feels a little bit like that. It is quite a significant milestone. I'm sure we'll pull out all the stops, but it does feel like perhaps we should have been planning for this a little sooner.
Well, I think it's fair to say this paper isn't, this paper isn't because we started thinking about it last week and thought we'd better put a paper on Exec Board today. There has been quite a bit of work moving forward towards this, towards this as well, and as referenced, you know, with input from obviously councillor Arif and other councillors as well. Jane and Andrew, you want to pick some of the other points up, please?
I can confirm that the city partners have been working on this for some time now and aligning their programs. We were really mindful that this wasn't an additional cost to anybody's budget. So instead, it really has been, and for some months now, about how are we facing into the four themes covering the celebration of Leeds 400 as we would with celebrations throughout the city on any other year?
Thank you. Jane, please.
And I'll pick up on King Charles. I think, Ed, we have written to King Charles?
I'm in touch with the Lord Lieutenant of West Yorkshire on appropriate royal representation.
Are there any more comments on this paper, please? Okay, we've given that a good going over. We'll turn to the recommendations on page twenty-five and on to page twenty-six. And I take it from the contributions, everybody's happy with those. That's great, thank you. We're now on to councillor Hayden's papers, please.
Thank you, Leader. The first of the papers is item seven, the annual report on academic outcomes. This is the annual report on academic outcomes in Leeds, which presents externally validated performance data across all key stages in the academic year 23-24. The report outlines positive improvements in relation to outcomes at early years foundation stage compared to 2023, with a rate of improvement exceeding the national rate. Key stage one outcomes in greater depth writing and maths are now in line with national figures, and key stage four performance continues to be a strength, with progress aid above national and strong English and maths pass rates. The report also sets out how we continue to support both maintained schools and academies to improve outcomes through targeted approaches. This includes the three As plan, which focuses on attendance, attainment and achievement, the inclusion charter, which promotes inclusive practice across all settings, and then my health, my school survey, which helps schools reports respond to the wider needs of children and young people beyond academic informed performance. Before I finish, I just want to thank the whole team in, the whole learning team at Leeds City Council for their continued work, which is day in, day out. But most especially, everyone involved with our children and young people in education in whatever setting across the city for their hard work each and every year. I know how hard it is. I know it's got harder. So, and I just want to pass on my appreciation for everything that they do in our schools and other education settings across the city. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, please.
Yep, thank you, Chair. Yeah, administrative point first that I always used to make in scrutiny is it'd be very helpful when presenting percentages if there are numbers to go with it. It's much easier to see things in context, so we do that, it'd be very helpful. First of all, if we could have a look at the table on 5.11 around children with SEND and the progress they're making. And obviously, if you look at the line of Leeds EHPs, it appears to be very out of line. So my understanding is that roughly speaking, as of today, there are about 2,600 children in Leeds with special education on these that are either awaiting assessment, they've got a draft plan that needs writing, or they've got plans in the process of being finalised. And what I'm not clear from the report is where they appear in this data, if they appear at all.
I'll bring in Rebecca, but my understanding of this is a report on the academic outcomes at GCSE, the end of key stage two, and the early years, good level of development. It's also very out of date because it's August twenty-four where the results were published for GCSE and A level. And since then, there's been a lot of movement and several reports gone to this board and scrutiny board on the EHPs. But if I can bring Rebecca in, I appreciate that.
Rebecca, please.
Thank you, Leader. The children who are awaiting assessment are generally recorded in schools as being SEND support, so they are included in the SEND support figures that are outlined here. There is a paragraph that outlines our difference between the number of children in Leeds who have an EHP compared to nationally and how that does impact on our figures. And in particular, in that 5.11 table, the paragraph does explain that a change in one individual child can have a 1.8% impact on those figures. So it is really important to understand that those children that are on SEND support will be those children that are often awaiting assessment.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm still not quite sure I'm clear where we're, maybe I'm just misunderstanding where we're measuring, but it seems to me that there's quite a big problem with measuring because we're so slow at getting EHPs done. And the fact that 2,600 outstanding is something that really needs to be addressed. But if we move on, so given the comments of the Home Secretary yesterday, on 8.15, it's talking about the number of pupils who don't have English as a first language. And my understanding is that the expectation that's going to rise to about a quarter of children in Leeds will not have English as their first language. So do we have a plan to address that? And by what stage in a child's life would we address that?
There's already an enormous amount of work goes on with children who have English as an additional language, or English that's not spoken as the mother tongue at home. That starts when we come into contact with children in the early years. And it will be, it will be in terms of our work in the early years sector, and it will be a priority. It's actually a huge advantage to have more than one language and understanding. The way that the brain works, and especially in children, sorry, I'm going a bit off piece here, but the way that the brain works with children and the plasticity of it means that if you can speak two different languages, it makes you incredibly more predisposed to making connections and seeing patterns and therefore doing so much better in your other academics, in other academic subjects. So I actually see it as something to celebrate. I wish I spoke another language. You know, I'm absolutely awful at it, so, and it's something to be celebrated. But obviously, those helped. And in terms of communication with parents who often don't speak two languages, then our teams work extremely hard and our schools work extremely hard. But it just shows the rich diversity of our city and it's something to be celebrated.
Dave, please.
Thanks, Leader. Yeah, just as well to add to what councillor has said, we've got a network of EAL leaders across the city from the schools, and schools are doing an incredible amount of work within their own development plans of developing young people who have got English as additional language. We have a traded offer as well with our learning improvement service, where schools come into training. They can commission an audit in terms of how they can operate with their EAL young people. And yeah, so there's a bit going on there.
Thank you. Councillor Lam.
Yeah, thank you. I completely agree with councillor Hayden's second point. Being multilingual is a huge advantage. But I also agree with the Home Secretary that it's really important that one of those languages is English. And what I was looking for is the plan to address that. But moving on to 9.11 around attainment for disadvantaged pupils, where we are not doing as well as we could. If you separate it out, some of our best performing academies in the city, you see, they are performing exceptionally well and actually pulling our figures up. So the question is, what are we doing to learn from those schools and academies in the city that are doing particularly well in this area, given that most of them became academies because they were failing under this local authority? What are we, what are we doing to learn lessons for the rest of our schools?
Dave, please.
Yeah, I think in terms of supporting, we've, with the, we've got twelve maintained secondary schools. One of the things that we try and utilise is our learning partnership. So we've got, we call it the LLP. It's virtually, all schools, academies and maintained are represented. And that's for all thirteen of the subjects across the curriculum. Their middle leaders working together, sharing practice, sharing effective provision. That's, and the local authority is part of that. We also utilise leaders from academies and maintained schools to lead other, to lead those sessions. So, you know, the academy system will have a good representation on those of leading sharing practice sessions amongst the city's secondary schools. So I think that's one of our examples of where good practice is taking place in terms of sharing practice. Councillor Lam.
Okay, are there any more comments on this paper? That's great. I'll turn to recommendations on page thirty-nine, and I take everybody is happy with those, happy with those recommendations. That's great. We'll move on to item eight, please councillor Hayden.
Thank you, Leader. So this report is thriving, the Child Poverty Strategy for Leeds. And I'm pleased to introduce this update report on our work to mitigate the impact of poverty on children and young people in Leeds. The report aligns with our Leeds ambitions and really reflects the breadth of work to support children and families experiencing poverty in Leeds. Our child poverty strategy sets out our aspirations for the kind of city that we want Leeds to be. This means that we are always looking at how our services can work together, informed by children and families, to improve their experiences and their outcomes. Work that comes under the strategy includes help and advice to parents seeking employment, improving access to green space, supporting families to maximise their income, practical support to young families through Baby Buddy app, and the successful healthy holidays programme, breakfast clubs and the school uniform exchange. Some fantastic case studies are included to show how these initiatives are making a difference where children access food and enriching activities during school breaks are where families have been supported through poverty aware practice to access housing advice, food support and emotional wellbeing services. The report also reflects how we are supporting young people with SEND in preparing for adult life. This summer, the SEND Next Choices event at Leeds First Direct Arena brought together seventy exhibitors, offering employment, training and leisure opportunities. Around 2,000 young people attended. For a group disproportionately affected by poverty and exclusion, it's a practical step towards widening access and raising aspirations. And I just want to thank the whole team across the city for their ongoing work to mitigate poverty, which is, particularly in children, in terms of childhood, is something we would never, ever want, but I just want to thank them for all their hard work in mitigating it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hayden. Councillor Lam, please.
Thank you. I think we all share the objective of trying to reduce and eradicate poverty, particularly among children in our city. I'm sure that we have some disagreements on the best way to do it, but we all want to be in that place as quickly as possible. So the questions for me are around the measuring and the impact. And I'll try and avoid making a political point on this one. Can't guarantee I'll stick with that for the rest of the papers, but you have rightly said over the years that the big challenge is we don't have all the levers to pull in the city around this agenda. There's, and councillor Hayden describes it as a strategy to mitigate poverty rather than actually try and get to the root causes. I think my constructive challenge would be, actually, I think we should be trying to remove poverty in our city, not just mitigate it. And the starting point is, there's a lot of focus on relative poverty, which is important and quite rightly. But I think we should also be set out, so the one thing I think we could and should do as a city is make a commitment to eradicate absolute poverty and have those numbers and make that really clear target. And if we did that, there are things we could do. And as you've said, where there are people living in absolute poverty in our city, that should not be acceptable to any of us in this day and age. It's not to blame anybody, so that's the position. Let's work together, let's do something about it. If we were to set that as a target, absolutely a hundred percent count on our, on our support to do that. I'd really like to see us do that piece of work.
Thank you, councillor Lam. Councillor Hayden, please.
How to eradicate all relative poverty in a city that, and a country that shouldn't have any poverty whatsoever, especially where children are concerned. Yes, I mean, a lot of the work we do, especially around employment and skills, is to lift parents and therefore children out of poverty. We're going to see over the next couple of years with the funded nursery places allowing parents to work, with the expansion of free school meals across all people claiming universal credit. So over the next year or so, we will see definite improvements in the lives of children who are living in poverty. There should, it's a moral wrong for any child to be in absolute poverty. And actually, in my book, it's an absolute wrong for any child to be living in relative poverty. No children should be living in poverty in this city as rich and as brilliant as Leeds is. We haven't got all the leaders. The last few years have meant that we have had to focus on mitigating the effects of certain policies that have reduced our children and too far, far too many. One is too many, but far, far too many living in circumstances that nobody would want.
Thank you, councillor Hayden. Are there any more comments on this paper? I don't see any, so I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page sixty-five, over on to page sixty-six. So I take it everybody is happy with those, happy with those recommendations. That's great, thank you. We're on to item nine, please councillor Hayden.
Thank you, Leader. This is the Children's Centre Review, the proposals for change. So this report sets out proposals for a major refresh of our Children's Centre network in Leeds. The aim is to ensure that our not-five-years family services remain accessible, inclusive and responsive to the changing needs of families across the city. Thirty-one centres will be retained, maintaining Leeds positions and having the largest children's network of any core city. As set out under the previous report, we are committed to addressing the impacts of child poverty, inequality and all the challenges this brings for children and families.
inequality and all the challenges this brings for children and families. In keeping with our strong early health record in Leeds, this refreshed model is informed by a needs assessment that takes into account levels of deprivation and social care involvement. Our multi-agency family hub network is recognised nationally as the best practice for not to five years family services. These proposals ensure our children's centres are aligned to them and able to offer improved access for families to specially support in terms of SEND, substance misuse, adult mental health, police and the Department of Work and Pensions work coaches. The report outlines a shift from building-led model to one focused on service reach, locality working and modern delivery. It reflects a significant demographic changes since the current network was established and sets out how we can better serve communities moving forward. What is really important is that where closures are proposed, services will continue to be delivered flexibly across a wider range of settings, including schools and community venues. The focus is on how families access support today, including digital options and how we can better align services with local needs. Thank you Leader.
Thank you councillor Hayden. Councillor Lam please.
Yeah, thank you. Apologies in advance, but I've got quite a number of questions and points on this one. The first one is, had this have been to scrutiny before it came here, I probably wouldn't have had as many questions because I suspect scrutiny would have picked them up and we'd have had a better paper to look at in the first place. The second thing is, let's call this what it is. It's a cut-in service to save money, dressed up as something else. I can read through, and to be fair, I think there are some of the aims in here which are perfectly sensible. I think focusing on, focusing the money that's available on delivering services rather than spending on buildings is a good place to start. And some of the things in here, I agree with. The problem is, it feels like the facts are being used. Sorry, the outcome is first and the facts are being used to shape that rather than looking at the evidence and then coming to the right conclusion. And there are numerous inaccuracies that I've found. This is a very detailed lengthy report. That I'm going to highlight five really clear errors in it. To me, this is another example where a decision made today will not be a sound decision and open to challenge. We've been here too many times before of recent times. It's not the only paper of such on today's agenda. So I will go through and flag some of these, some of these issues up. So let's start in PUDC, and the proposal to close the Southroyd Primary School. In the papers, it says that the Southroyd Primary School is used by Children's Centre Family Services for only half a day per week. Now, what Southroyd Primary tell us is the centre is currently used five days a week from 8am to 6pm for 50 weeks a year by a centre manager, outreach workers, class activity providers. They have between five and 10 baby and parent classes run each week and so on and so on. It does, what I understand, having dug deeper into it, is effectively because the council are behind schedule on delivering this review, they have changed the starting point they're measuring from. So they came to an interim arrangement with PUDC and that is what's presented in this report, not the actual facts of what happens on the ground. So on the basis of PUDC, the evidence that is being put forward for this decision is completely inaccurate. If we move on to Farsley and Calverley next door, so justification given. A is that the centre is used two and a half days per week. I understand that's not correct either, and it has longer operating hours for it. It also says that it's perfectly fine because the nearest service is 2.7 miles away at Swinow. So people can get that. What it doesn't do and what the approach you're taking to your formulas doesn't do is reflect the geography of our city. So while you're saying that we will still have the most children's centres of core cities, what it doesn't reflect is if we take Birmingham, for example, which is the biggest council in terms of population, geographically Leeds is twice the size of Birmingham, which means people are further away. The formula for funding doesn't reflect the real lives of people. So if you, if you started at Farsley Primary School, to get to the Swinow Children's Centre, that's two buses. It's an hour, maybe 2.7 miles. If you don't have access to a car, that is not an easy journey to make. If you live in Calverley, what isn't set out here is what happens to the outreach services that happen in Calverley. And again, it's two buses if you live in Calverley to get to the Swinow Community Centre and quite a chunk out of your day, which is a big barrier to a lot of people getting there. So that's mistake number two that I've spotted. If we go on to number three, which is Garforth, where we're told that Garforth only operates for two and a half days a week. My understanding is that operates for five days a week. And when you look at the evidence in the locality, you really do wonder how we came to the conclusion that Kipax, for example, should stay open in the leaders' ward and Garforth nearby should close. The evidence doesn't seem to support that. I can quite understand why the leader would want to keep, keep the centre open in Kipax. I'm sure it's very important. But you do wonder how these conclusions have been come to. Next, we'll come on to my own ward of Wetherby. Now, actually, in this case, for several years, I've been suggesting to the council that we don't need to use both the buildings for children's centres in Wetherby. One in Wetherby, one in Boston Spa. And Wetherby is the obvious one to choose. The reason I'm picking on it is because it highlights the poor quality of the evidence that's being put forward to support the decisions. So in here, it says, really easy to get from Boston Spa to Wetherby. Good transport connections. I'd be interested to know what we mean by good transport connections. And the officers or whoever's written this report is saying the good example of that is the Arreva Service, number 174. So if, in responding to that, if somebody could explain to me what the journey will look like for someone who lives, say, in Clifford in my ward to get to, say, a 10 o'clock start for a session in Wetherby Children's Centre and tell me that the evidence backs up the conclusion that it includes a good bus service and it's really easy to get to. Now, I dare say there are many, many, many more mistakes in this report than the small number I've highlighted. I could go on. I don't think I need to. What I'm suggesting is it would be deeply irresponsible to make this decision today based on what's in front of you. Because I don't think it's accurate or reliable. The other point that I've heard repeatedly from people who've been in touch with me from all around the city is they understand why we need to address this issue. They understand that the council needs to make money. But they feel yet again, the council isn't listening to them, is doing this to them, not with them. And they're absolutely up for working with you, but they feel deeply let down by the evidence that's presented in this paper, which bears no relation to reality. So I absolutely cannot support this today. Direction of travel can support, but my proposal would be, we don't make the decision today. We get scrutiny involved. We get the organisations involved, do this properly and make sure it works right for the people of Leeds.
Thank you. Phil, would you like to come back please?
Yeah, thank you Leader. And councillor Lam raises a number of points that I'll try to address in turn. I absolutely understand the request in relation to scrutiny first. We are engaging with the scrutiny board around what they may wish to do in terms of adding added value to the report and that's a commitment that we've made. There has been challenges in terms of meeting cycles, in terms of being able to do that in the way that's expected. The way that councillor Lam has set out, but there is an absolute commitment to further engage with scrutiny. Should scrutiny wish to do so, we're very conscious that that is a matter for the scrutiny board to determine. In a paper that runs to 94 pages, has such a significant amount of detail that has been taken in and has been analysed. Unfortunately, there are a few inaccuracies. I was aware of the PUDC and Southroyd one where we've engaged with the head teacher on that. And as councillor Lam has acknowledged, that as I understand it, there was a temporary arrangement, which has led to a little bit of confusion. I'm not aware of the detail on the other ones that councillor Lam has raised in terms of inaccuracies. And I will go back to the team and look at those and come back to councillor Lam. The point I would make however, is that the report in itself very clearly sets out that there are a number of drivers for this service redesign. It is not solely on the basis of location and asset utilisation. It picks up the issues around deprivation that are, that are present. It picks up the, the issues around locality working. It picks up the fact that there needs to be a service model that moves into the future that does reflect the agreed budget for the council. Fundamentally, we will still have many more children's centres should this paper be agreed by executive board and moved forward. There is then very clearly further work that needs to be done in terms of what does that service provision look like? And that will be a series of further conversations with stakeholders around that, around what that will look and feel like in localities. What we are absolutely committed to doing is, as councillor Hayden has set out, is focusing on services, not buildings, seeking to use the council access and community assets as best as we are able. And that actually, we will seek to co-design with parents and users of the services, the actual model of the services that will be delivered in those locations. What we want to try to do and what we think the paper sets out realistically is that there will be a much more flexible and agile approach to the delivery of services than possibly has previously been the case. And that's a commitment that we want to try to continue to.
Thank you. Councillor Hayden please.
Thank you. Yes, there was, I think councillor Lam said about closing Southroyd Primary School. So I just want to correct that, that we're not closing the primary school. I want to apologise for the error there. It is a very detailed report. And this was an error and we apologise. But closing the children's centre does not mean that it's a school which really values its children's centre services. And we are committed to working with the school to deliver some of their services, you know, with their support. There is a legal entity of a children's centre that, and if we are going to be much more flexible and aligned with demographic shifts and taking services where people are rather than concentrating on buildings, then we need to look at closing and deregistering the actual building as a children's centre. That's not to say that children's services, children's centres services cannot be delivered from that school and they will, and I would be delighted to continue with such a Greg Primary School, a Southroyd Primary School, and how much it values its early years. And I'm really, I'm very, very willing to continue working with them for our children and families. On the matter of Farsley, it's suggested to Swinow. That doesn't mean to say that any family of young children have to use Swinow Children's Centre. Any family in this, in the city can use any children's centre they, they wish to. So if Bramley is nearer to them, then they can go, then go to Bramley, depending where you're living in Farsley and Calverley and Farsley. So it's not set out that you have to go to that, to that, to that children's centre. And again, we will be looking to use, and this is the case with Garforth, which has a fabulous library. And looking to for children's services, the staff will be based at Kipax in the children's centre there. But that's, I'm, there will be lots of children's centre services running Geisley in the centre of that town and the centre of that, that community. Using other buildings, which frankly can be much more suitable. If you're doing a story time, if you're doing anything to do with kind of like a role play or anything like that, then the fabulous Garforth Library will be much more suitable than, than other buildings. We're realigning the model. These children's centres were set up 20 years ago. They've served us well. But we live in a very, very different world. We live in a world where people access services in a very differently to 20 years ago. And we need to make those services agile, go to people to be where they are with the needs that they have rather than making everyone come to a certain point in geography to deliver those services. And I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hayden. Councillor Lam please.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I don't think the principal points have been addressed at all there. So I don't think anyone's in a position to assure me that the mistakes I've highlighted are not the only ones in this report. I'll be astonished if they are. The second point, nobody's addressed the geography and scale of the city. It's one thing to say, well, you don't have to go to to Swinow if you live in Farsley. Well, the reason Swinow's been picked out here is because it's the closest one. Where else would they go councillor Hayden? And you, it's, you said we're not closing the primary school, so slip of the tongue on my part. It reminded me of your actions over Queensway Primary School, which you did, did close over this one. We're in a similar place here with this. The problem for me is going back to the poverty paper and going forwards to the financial papers that we're going to do. There are lots of people all over the city. And geographically, as I said, of the core cities, we are the biggest comfortably in the country. So if you're living in difficult circumstances or in poverty on the outer edges of the city, to me, you are no less important than someone in similar circumstances anywhere else in the city. And we have to make sure wherever you are, you've got access to the right services. Now, this was set out as a money-saving exercise. We know that because it was in the budget. It's already behind schedule, so you're not, it's contributing to the overspend that we're about to discuss shortly, that it hasn't been delivered yet. The direction of travel of a focus on services rather than centres is right. And we'll support and work with you on that. The way you're doing it and going about it is all wrong. And the evidence base isn't accurate. So I'm simply, I'm not saying we don't need to do something. We, given the financial state we're going to come on to, we have to do things differently. We have to approach service delivery differently. And we have to be willing to put our differences aside and work together to make those changes. What I'm saying is, I don't think you're making a sound decision. And I don't think you're making a decision based on sound evidence. It feels to me and all the people involved, the decision about what to do was made long ago. And you've been trying to put a pack of evidence together to support that. The fact, as we can see, the evidence is not accurate or reliable tells us we should be thinking again. You're already not making the saving. I would urge you to take a little bit more time, be a little bit more humble and work with the people who are affected that are telling you, we don't think you've got this quite right, and other members. And let's get it right. And let's get a service that's fit for the future, otherwise you'll be back in 12 months having to do another review. So that's my suggestion. Let's not make the decision today. Let's get scrutiny involved, all the other partners and make a better job of this.
Phil please.
Thanks Leader. Just to correct councillor Lam, Queensway School remains open. There was a proposal for a reorganisation, but as you know, the school is currently open. And I think we ought to just put that on the matter, as a matter of record, that the school remains open. I do take councillor Lam's position and I've heard very clearly what he, what he said. I feel that I need to say to executive board that the paper in front of you, which is written by officers, in my opinion, is absolutely a fair reflection of the work that was undertaken that does seek to capture a whole range of perspectives. So I think the paper sets out in depth the consultation activities. It sets out clearly that there were areas of support and areas with less support. It sets out the fact that there does need to be a reconceptualised model. It sets out that that reconceptualised model will include an element of universal service that will focus on digital and technology. That it will move to a set of arrangements where there will be less focus on buildings and more focus on services. That it will include outreach, that it will include a model that will seek to reflect the needs of individuals in the city and as we move it forward. That is a paper that is written by officers and is presented to executive board fairly on the basis of officers' judgement as to what the report says. Officers have not written this, this paper with a view that there is a predetermination in mind. And I just think we need to be clear about, about that.
Thank you Phil. I think at this point, I'm going to move to the recommendations on the paper with that reassurance from Phil Evans. We're going to note the inaccuracy on PUDC Southroyd. We're going to note, um, the inaccuracy on Putsey Southwye School and the movement of recommendations. Uh, we will, um, note that and, and that will be corrected. I heard a clear commitment from both Phil Evans and councillor Hayden to continue to work with scrutiny on the implementation with, on this paper. I agree with you councillor Lamb, in the financial position we are in, um, the savings are important. So with that, um, I'm going to move, uh, the recommendations. Councillor Lamb, could you let us know what your position is on the recommendations?
Yeah, I, I can't support this as it stands.
Okay, thank you. Um, I take it everybody else is happy with the recommendations? That's great. Thank you. And we shall move on to your paper, please councillor Cooper, talking of the council's financial situation.
Thank you. Um, thank you leader. And, uh, and yes, um, I, I know that, uh, the financial position has been mentioned in a number of reports already, uh, that we've heard at executive board today. So, uh, today's, uh, paper from me is the month five, uh, iteration of the financial position of the council. Um, and to note for our executive board members, um, that the, uh, reflection of the projected overspend has changed from last month and has now increased to 29.28 million. The detail, uh, of which is in the report as, um, alluded to in the previous paper. Children and families have, um, had an increase in their overspend, um, for, uh, the projection for the end of the year. Um, it's important to, uh, to say actually that, um, despite the, um, the overspending uh, in some children's service areas, um, other directorates have been making significant savings throughout, um, throughout the year already. Um, and we are on track, um, in other directorates to, uh, deliver those savings that we've set out in, in the, um, budget back in February. Um, and so I'll leave it there for now, um, Chair, happy for any questions as always.
Thank you. Councillor Lamb, please.
Yeah, I'm feeling increasingly like Bill Murray when we get to, uh, to this paper in Groundhog Day. Um, yes, um, it, it's not a pretty picture again. Um, the, uh, the, the biggest concern for me is actually, uh, I'm going to focus exclusively on children and families on this one. Um, if I've understood the report and the figures correctly, the current overspend, which has increased by nearly seven million pounds from the last month, does not yet reflect the, uh, the situation around external residential care placements. Um, the target, as we've discussed several times, is to get it to 77 by the end of the year. Nobody is going to sit around this table and tell me with a straight face that that's going to happen or anything close to it. So my current estimation is that when you come back next month, that's going to add another 10 million or thereabouts to this figure that's not accounted for yet. If someone wants to tell me I'm wrong, then please do so, but I don't think they will. So that would take our overspend, if nothing else goes wrong, to about 40 million. So what I'd like to understand from Victoria is how much of that can be covered by the strategic contingency reserve that was in place? How much of that can be covered from the social care reserve? And how much of that is going to come, have to come out of general reserves, which we were supposed to be putting money into because we already don't have enough reserves? And my, uh, I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but my back of the fag packet calculation, um, suggested to me that at the end of this year, we will be down to about 15 million of general reserves. Now, given the overspend we've had in recent years, this council is on the verge of running out of money. If we don't take action and we've got 100 million to find savings for next year. So we are in a doom loop where we're expecting the people of Leeds to pay more and more and more and they are going to get less and less and less in return. So, uh, any of my assumptions, they're wrong.
Victoria, please.
Um, thank you Chair. Um, the position doesn't, as you correctly say, doesn't represent, um, the, um, overspend on external residential. It still assumes that we would achieve 77 at the end of the financial year. However, as you'll be aware, we've got independent, um, support who's reviewing that position at the moment so that we get a robust position where the, where the numbers of external residential will be at the end of the year if we have a robust action plan, which they'll be, um, advising us on. That will give us a better understanding of what to include in the forecasts going forward and also inform the medium-term financial strategy, um, for future years as well around where those demand, um, for that service will be. Um, what we are doing is, um, obviously recognising that this is a significant position and we will be putting, um, further controls in place, um, to mitigate that position, to bring that down as much as possible by the end of the financial year. And, um, as you rightly said, we have got the strategic contingency reserve and the social care reserve, which we did set up for this purpose, that if pressures came in in year, that we would be able to manage it. There's about 18.8 million in those two reserves left that we'll be using. And if, um, there is an overspend above that at the end of the year, then that would come from general fund balances. What we have detailed in the report is that, um, if we do use any general fund balances, they will be replenished as part of setting the budget, um, for next year and for the subsequent two years so that to make sure that at the end of the, the medium-term financial strategy, the general fund balances are at the level that we were predicting and been working towards. We'd also look as part of the, um, budget when we set it, when we set it in, um, February to put some funding in the strategic contingency reserve and the social care reserve for future years to make sure that, um, where we do see demand increases above what we've assumed in the strategy can be managed, um, so that we do make sure that the council when we start next year is on a more, um, financially, um, sustainable position, um, going forward. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Ed, please.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Lamb. Um, to totally support what our section 151 officer has said, uh, you're correct. The external residential is the main driver of cost in children's and families. The underlying cost of children and families is comparable to many of other cities. Um, in November, we're seeking to bring a report back to this board that explains, following the independent work that Victoria has outlined, both where we are, what a robust forecast for the future will be and what we do about it and how we secure that. Um, I think you're, you're correct in your assessment about the risks of the council finances from that and we're acting accordingly, both with our statutory duties and with sensible medium-term planning. So further discussions to have, um, agree with your, your diagnosis of where we are and our challenges, what we do next and we're coming back to that in November.
Thank you. Councillor Lamb, please.
Thank you for that. Um, if that was the only issues that would still be troubling, um, it's not. So there are two more, um, I'd appreciate some comment on please. Uh, one, I understand there's some significant pressures on, um, they're always very difficult. Knowing people are watching this, lots of technical terms, so the council's budget is very complicated. But one separate bit of it is the housing revenue account. Um, I'd like to understand where we are on temporary accommodation and what the potential cost pressures are around that. Um, the second bit is, uh, around the proposal for fair funding for care staff. Uh, and I'm sure we'd all support the principle of that. That's due to come in, in April 2028. My understanding is there is no extra money. So it is going to be a repeat of the employers' national insurance contributions. Um, that as things stand, we're going to be expected and the care sector are going to be expected to give a much-needed uplift in pay to care sector workers. But that will have to come out of existing budgets, uh, unless again, someone tells me I'm wrong. Um, and why does all of this matter? It matters because that's why then decisions are coming about closing children's centres, why less road repairs are getting done, why people's council tax is going up by the maximum, why the potholes aren't being filled in and so on and so on. That's why it matters and collectively we have got to get a grip of this situation and get the council's finances onto an even keel.
James, please.
Thank you Chair. Um, I'll come in on the temporary accommodation question. So just to first of all, clarify that temporary accommodation is part of the general fund. It's not part of the HRA. So it is covered within this report. It's referenced on page, um, 355, the agenda at the bottom, where it refers to statutory housing services. And it refers to an overall net overspend of 4.6 million within statutory housing services, which is predominantly to do with temporary accommodation. What you will see within, um, my directorate is that we've, um, got a number of mitigations in place in terms of trying to manage those pressures and those costs, which is why we're still reporting a balanced budget. So it's not contributing to the overall overspend of the council because we're managing those pressures currently within the directorate. But they are increasing pressures, the ones which obviously we're working hard on.
Thank you. Jess, please.
Just, um, briefly around, um, some more detail on temporary accommodation. Um, people will know that the Renters' Rights Bill is on its way back into, into the Commons after being, um, after being, um, amended and looked at, um, in the Lords. Something that the previous government didn't make any moves on for a number of years was the, the main element of that, which is protection from no-fault section 21 evictions. Now in Leeds, the, the increase in, um, needs of families in temporary accommodation. Uh, it's sorry, the need to place families in temporary accommodation has come as a direct result of the increase in section 21 evictions that happened after the mini-budget of October 2023. Um, we now see, um, on the way, um, legislation that will prevent families from being evicted with no fault and very short notice, which means that we will see less of them entering temporary accommodation, less of them needing to be, um, accommodated in that way. We are also, um, just, I believe this week, bringing online, um, over 50, um, she, uh, over 50, um, temporary accommodation places that we are running in the old Kirkstall Brewery, uh, student accommodation. That is coming online imminently as we speak. I believe we've got the keys this week, which means that we can take, um, those families who are in that very expensive temporary accommodation and put them in, um, somewhere that we have, um, we've renovated, we've brought up to standards and they will have, um, support on site from housing Leeds colleagues and from children and families colleagues and various other services to make sure that we're supporting them into, um, permanent suitable accommodation and sorting out all of the other things that we, that we, that we pick up when we have contact with families like that. So that temporary accommodation picture is likely to change before this time next year.
It's great you. Thank you. Caroline, please.
Thank you very much. Um, in relation to councillor Lamb's query about the fair pay agreement, we're absolutely mindful that this is likely to be an additional pressure uh, that our social care, adult social care providers are going to face. Um, uh, at the same time as implementation of the fair, uh, fair pay agreement, uh, we're very much mindful that Dame Louise Casey is, uh, doing a social, adult social care reforms, um, sort of review. She's talking to local authorities currently as we speak to look at what the reforms mean for local authorities going forward and, uh, the funding that is going to be required for adult social care directorates to remain, uh, financially viable and what that means to the market. Um, Dame Louise Casey is actually coming to Leeds and, um, talking to our Leeds Care Association and the Bradford Care Association, really to understand just these sorts of, uh, potential financial pressures. Uh, 500 million funding had been identified, um, for the, uh, fair pay agreement, but we do know that this is not new funding. It's funding that has already been identified to pass on to local authorities for adult social care.
Thank you. Councillor Cooper, please.
Thank you, um, leader. And, um, and just to say that, um, you know, I welcome the, um, questions from councillor Lamb, quite rightly, um, asking, um, challenging questions around, um, the council's finances. Um, we recognise that we, we are in, um, challenging circumstances in terms of our finance. It's one of the reasons that we quite openly and transparently bring reports to executive board every single time, um, in terms of the position, um, that we are at, at that reporting time. We take it to scrutiny. I have the last two scrutinies. I've taken it to scrutiny before it's come to executive board so that we can take on, onboard scrutiny's views as well before, um, we even present it to executive board. Um, we are having, um, you know, cross-council working, um, groups, including, um, oversight meetings, which I chair, uh, of adult social care and oversight meetings of, um, children and families. Um, you know, we recognise that these are really difficult, challenging times for local authorities, particularly around social care and the funding for social care, the cost of, um, external placements, uh, as you quite rightly mentioned. All of that work is ongoing at the moment and we're hoping to bring, um, a further update, um, on the outcome of that work in November. So, um, that will be a, uh, hopefully a true reflection of the cost of those, um, external placements towards the end of the year, um, in terms of, of forecasting as, as much as we can, depending on the demand that we, um, never can, um, you know, uh, forecast because we don't know what's going to, um, you know, come through our doors in terms of need. Um, and more recently, um, in recent years, we are seeing that, um, the people that do come for assistance, um, through our doors, they're more complex, um, cases and they are the more costly, um, in terms of cases. But of, uh, of course, you know, we must respond, um, to those vulnerable individuals. And I know that you would support that we do that as well. Um, but like I said, next month, we will bring in a further update on this. We'll continue to be open and transparent, um, about the figures. We look forward to the, um, policy announcements from the government and also the, uh, the budget, um, at the end of November, uh, that we'll be able to then, um, set our budget going forward, uh, for next February. Thanks leader.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 340 of this paper. Um, I take it everybody's happy with the recommendations? That's great. Thank you. Thanks councillor Cooper. Onto your papers, please councillor Prior, item 11.
Thank you leader. So this paper articulates, uh, the economic vision for Leeds right up to 2035. Uh, it's about our, it's our approach to power economic growth and to help enable business to raise their productivity, creating potentially up to 100,000 new jobs. Uh, I'm really pleased as well that our regional econometric model is now forecasting a GVA growth of 20 billion in Leeds over the next 10 years. Um, and it's really important that we grow, uh, an inclusive economy. Uh, and that inclusive growth strategy, you know, it's not just about growing the Leeds economy and creating those good jobs, but it's absolutely that. It's also about providing outstanding education and training for people and it's about delivering the infrastructure and the regeneration that meets the housing needs in the city. So in recent years, we've seen things like the completion of the Leeds flood alleviation scheme. We've built the highest number of affordable homes out of any other core city over the past five years. We're providing affordable and low-carbon heat through the 100 million pound district, district heating network and looking ahead to the next decade with a pipeline of 12 and a half billion pounds worth of investment into the city. Um, we've got a lot to be proud of, uh, and a lot coming into the future. And we're really working hard to ensure that this growth in Leeds reaches all corners of the city. Already we're outpacing, uh, the region in terms of growth, but we are focusing on three priority sectors. So there's our finance and professional services, health and health tech and digital and tech. And this report sets out seven strategic steps to accelerate growth, improve infrastructure and strengthen resilience right across the city. Um, so exec board today is asked to agree the economic vision, which sits at the heart of the inclusive growth strategy. Uh, and to note that the further work will be undertaken with partners to deliver this vision, um, with individual approvals sought as needed. I shall leave it there for my introduction.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Prior. Councillor Lamb, please.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Um, it's always difficult to disagree with the sentiments, um, and objectives with these things. Um, I was just wondering, I, 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 uh, I usually save this for council. I thought a bit of our audience participation might be, might be in order for this one. So I, I was curious to know, sat around this table, how many people have run their own business? I'll put my hand up.
Thank you. We're not doing audience participation. This is try Alan, this is executive board, it's not full council, so we're not doing audience.
Just because you weren't able to participate, doesn't mean we weren't.
Oh, no, sorry. Um, had I not been, you know, trying to bring this back to me as executive board, I'd have had my hand up at that point, Alan. So just to reassure you, ju- just to reassure you of that, but you know, let's stick to the paper, please.
Well, there were three hands, including mine. Um, and the point I can speak with a bit of authority on having a very small business, uh, in our city. Um, and one of the things, uh, to be fair, I flagged this up to officers in my briefing and they accepted it was an oversight, but it's still important to mention it here. One of the stakeholders that wasn't. One of the stakeholders that wasn't consulted on this was the Federation of Small Businesses. And it's going to be corrected. I understand quite right, too. But it kind of speaks to one of the issues for me, that I think sometimes we get starstruck by big business. Big business is important and they bring a lot of jobs, but there is no big business that didn't start as a small one. And the number of small businesses in our city, their impact outweighs significantly the impact of the big businesses. And we should be really relentlessly focused on making sure we are the best place in the country to start a business, best place in a country to scale up a business and then the best place in the country to stay in business. And the other bit that's missing here, I made a similar point at the combined authority at the last meeting, is we never focus any of our resource on the last bit, helping people to stay in business, particularly in these times when the sands shift and the goalposts move very quickly and frequently. And sometimes a little bit of help and support would help particularly small businesses to keep going and give them time to adapt to changing circumstances. We're always focused on the next big tech sector and I kind of understand it, but some of our traditional small businesses could just use a little bit of help and support sometimes. That would help keep them going and the people they employ and potentially help them to grow and be the next big business in the city. So they're the key points. And the other bit, which really is the big red light on the dashboard, is to grow our economy, we need a workforce. And roughly a quarter of the population of our city of working age is currently not in or available to the labour market. And there are lots of plans about it, but we really have to get stuck into that because that is going to be the biggest barrier. I can say as someone who runs a business, the biggest barrier to growth is often the availability of the right people with the right skills in the right place or the ability for them to get from where they are to where you'd like them to be. That's often the barrier that you can't move around. There's someone you'd like to employ and someone would like to take the job, they just practically cannot get from A to B. And so while absolutely support the goals here, they're the bits I'd really like to see strengthened in it.
I think on, so I chair the Economy Committee at the Combined Authority and we did have a discussion last time. We do have the work and health money at the Combined Authority, which we're putting into that. The, to reassure you, councillor Lamb, the Federation of Small Businesses is represented in the work we do around that. And it is a point that all the employer, either representative bodies like the FSB and the employers around the table make a lot around the importance. The importance of that work and like I say, it's something the government through the combined authorities are looking are looking to address in terms of taking that forward. Councillor Prior, please.
Yeah, I think kind of those points around business growth are really important. Leeds is one of the strongest core cities for business growth. So it's not just about starting a business. It's, as you say, it's about making sure that business can thrive. I think from memory, after London, we're the best place in the UK for that record of business growth. In my next paper on Briget, I was going to talk about some of the new independent businesses that we've got opening up. So since 2022, the number of empty units in the city centre has halved. So I think you're absolutely right to raise that, but equally, I think we've got a strong record to demonstrate. Running businesses is tough, but I think we're doing an incredible job at supporting those. I don't know if Fiona wants to add anything else.
Fiona, please.
Thank you. So I just wanted to come in on connecting people's jobs and also to talk about the FSB as well. So we have now sent that, I have sent that personally to the FSB as well and will be happy to speak to them about what's in the plan. In terms of connecting people to jobs, yes, we do have an issue in particular around inactivity and inactivity linked to health. And we are working with the Combined Authority and with DWP and we are pivoting some of our employment and skills support directly towards that. There are two cohorts that we think are the biggest, or the evidence suggests that are the biggest. There are people over 50 who have multiple conditions, but also things like musculoskeletal and cardiovascular. And then a smaller cohort of younger people, but this is one of the fastest growing, which is young people and mental health. So the employment skills team will be working really closely to work with those cohorts. And then later in the year, we hope to be able to expand that through the Connect Work Programme with DWP to look at other groups that are inactive or have particular difficulties connecting to the labour market. But it is a core part of what we want to do moving forward.
Thank you. Angela, please.
Thank you. And I just want you to clarify two points because the sectors aren't just about big employers. They're also about start-up and scale-up too. And you often find certainly in the digital sector and certainly within Leeds, we've had real success in terms of spin-outs and scale-ups that have then gone on to be bought out as well. So it is about all businesses or all size of businesses, but these are the sectors that when we look over the next decade are likely to give Leeds the greatest opportunity of growth. And then the other point was about that this is still firmly embedded with our inclusive growth strategy. Within it, there are nine key components and one of them is our Future Talent Plan for Leeds, which is still very, very relevant and still embedded within the policy. So this is looking at the heart of the inclusive growth strategy about where that growth is likely to come from. But actually, the toolkit that's surrounded is still very firmly embedded within that vision.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else want to come in on this item, so I'll turn to the recommendations on page three hundred and eighty-two and I take it everybody is happy with those recommendations. Thank you. We can move on to item twelve, please.
Thank you. So this is the launch of a consultation on the proposed Briget Action Plan. And so Briget welcomes around a quarter of a million visitors every week. We've seen footfall increase every single year-on-year. And as mentioned in the last report, we've seen the number of empty units halved, roughly almost halved since 2022. We're really proud to have such a strong city centre and this paper proposes launching a consultation on a new action plan to address growing concerns around safety, accessibility and the overall visitor experience in a city centre. So these initial proposals are based on public and business feedback and include proposals to extend the pedestrianised hours to require cyclists to dismount in pedestrianised areas during peak times, to fully pedestrianise Lower Albion Street and to prohibit licensed peddlers from key areas. And exec board is asked to note the contents of the report and to approve the commencement of a detailed consultation. Subject to sport, the plan will be delivered starting as soon as the consultation is finished with until 2027, with implementation overseen by city centre management and relevant officers.
Thank you, Councillor Prior. Councillor Lamb, please.
Yep, thank you, Chair. I have a particular affection and affinity for Briget because I started my working life there at age 16. And to show my age, we still had through traffic going through at that time, for those of us that can remember it. Yeah, so the bus stopped right outside my place of work in those days. So, yeah, I've seen how it's evolved and changed over the years and become what it is today. I'm pleased to see this report, particular around these e-bikes. We almost need two categories of e-bikes. The ones that are, I don't know how you distinguish between, well, I know legally how you do, but describing them. So there's the ones that you pedal and you get a bit of help. And then these ones that are not far off being motorbikes, that are an absolute menace, an absolute menace, not just on Briget, not just in the city centre, all around our city. Whenever you're driving around, anybody see them whizzing around on pavements, on roads, it's illegal. So there's a part of this that just needs us to enforce a lot. Often people with their faces completely covered, no identifying, it is an absolute menace and terrifying people around the city. So it's quite right that we're trying to do something about. They can go up to 45 miles an hour, which just shouldn't be happening. If they go through a speed camera, there's no means of detecting who it was or doing anything about it. So I think you're right to be looking at this and you can count on our support with it. What I would say is I think we need to be broadening it out a little bit. So I know when you look in the detail, it does go wider than Briget. I'm not sure it's quite right. I think it should be a city centre action plan. It's focused very much around the Briget area, but the facts of life mean people are not going to stop being too lazy towards to order a Greg's pasty from one side of the city to the other. It's still going to be whizzing round and if it's not going down Briget, it will still be going somewhere else and causing a menace to people. And the other bit is who's going to enforce this and how? Because, do we need police on e-bikes? But that's not going to help if we've got high-speed e-bike chases through the centre of Leeds. So I know we'll have to pull this, it's going to more consultation. I just think we just need to get it right. You can't uninvent the wheel. I really think we need to involve the fast food chains and in stage, it's a lot of independents as well involved, the providers who have got a big responsibility to do this. And potentially they should have to have some kind of identifying markers on their deliverers so that you can easily identify the ones that are causing a nuisance and do something about it.
Thank you, councillor Lamb. It's normally my job to carry on about when traffic went up the middle of Briget. So I'm sure, I know, I know, I'm sure some of my colleagues are kind of like rolling their eyes when you said it because I hear it from me every other, every other week. Councillor Prior, please.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Kind of your normal e-bike, very similar to the barrel bikes, you've got to pedal a bit and then you get a bit of help, greater pills. The kind of the souped-up ones, you'd be amazed at how little people are pedaling and yet are still getting incredible speed. Then they're not e-bikes by the same definition at all. And it is absolutely the right thing to crack down a lot on this. It's something I'm sure all of us as councillors get a lot of complaints about, largely about the illegal ones. But I'm going to be honest, down kind of Briget, there are complaints about kind of the pushbacks as well. And I think we need to recognise that when Briget was pedestrianised, that was before a lot of these e-bikes even existed. So it is right that we look again at those rules. And what this would do is essentially give the police a lot more powers around enforcement. I do want to pay tribute to the police who have done quite a lot of work on cracking down on these, particularly the illegal bikes. They have done a huge amount of work. There's a huge amount more to do and I hope this can be part of the pieces in helping them along with that.
Thank you. Angela, please.
I was just going to add that we are working with Leeds Bid, who are also part of a national conversation with some of the delivery companies. Because obviously this isn't an issue that's just confined to Leeds and we are supporting that as well.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn to the, turn to the recommendations on page four hundred and thirteen and over to four hundred and fourteen, which is to start the consultation. Sounds like we've already had a preview of councillor Lamb's consultation response. So I take it everybody from the contribution, everybody's happy with those recommendations. That's great. Thanks, councillor Prior. And we're on to the last paper. Councillor Lennox, please.
Thank you. There's quite a bit I'd like to pick out about this paper. There's people have seen, it's a very extensive report. And I want at the start to thank the many officers who've been involved in compiling all of the information, all of the data, the analysis and bringing together all of what's been presented to us in the report. So I'm just going to pick out some of the most key points for this as we extend this scheme around the city. So this report sets out the business case for the proposed selective licensing designation across five of the city's six priority wards. And they are Armley, Beeston and Holbeck, Bermentos, Richmond Hill, Hunslut and Riverside and Gipton and Hare Hills, and to ensure a coherent and logical boundary, a small area of Farmley and Wiltley. And as outlined in the Leeds ambitions, the council remains firmly committed to tackling poverty and inequality and selective licensing is a proven tool to help improve housing standards in the private rented sector, which as we know is an area that is, that significantly influences health, wellbeing and financial stability of many of our residents. In developing this proposal, the council's carefully considered the government's criteria for selective licensing. The business case is underpinned by two key factors, which are high levels of deprivation and a high concentration of privately rented homes. The proposed designation covers approximately 10% of the city's population and 88% of this area will fall between, fall within the most deprived 10% nationally of neighbourhoods and the remaining 12% will fall within the bottom 20% of neighbourhoods nationally. We've seen the positive impact of previous schemes in Beeston and Hare Hills, where thousands of homes were improved following inspections. Furthermore, by visiting homes and working with partners, the council can support those in need in relation to poor health and financial hardship and access to other services. We can signpost them while continuing to address other issues in these, many, some of these properties, criminality linked to private rented sector properties. The council undertook a comprehensive consultation over nearly 12 weeks from the 23rd of September to 13th of December last year. This was promoted through various channels, including the council website, numerous face-to-face events, social media platform, out-of-home adverts. It was on buses, it was on, you know, what are they called? Sorry, flyboards. And lots of work with local localities teams as well as work with members to extend information about the consultation. We received 2,189 responses and 1,880 of those are from residents and stakeholders and 309 of them were from landlords and agents. There is more detail, a lot of detail on the breakdown of the responses in the report. The council has considered all the feedback received, however, it's worth noticing that there were concerns regarding the validity of some of the resident and stakeholder feedback due to the use of VPNs, multiple responses from the same IP addresses and patterns of the entries and responses. Consequently, as I mentioned, the report has done a lot of work to categorise and to analyse these responses and consider them in four groupings to get an accurate picture. One of the key issues raised was the inclusion of city centre developments. And following a detailed review, it was confirmed that these areas don't meet the deprivation criteria. So the boundary has been readjusted accordingly. And as this change reduces the scope of the scheme rather than extending it, no further consultation has been required about that. Concerns were also raised about the fee and it's important to note that both proposed fees are around £50 below the actual cost to the council, resulting in a £600,000 saving to the sector. Additionally, landlords who are members of the Leeds Rental Standard will benefit from a further £150 discount. Some residents expressed fears around potential rent increases and evictions. However, the extensive evidence that was taken from the previous schemes show that all revoked licences, those properties were subsequently relicenced in the private rented sector with no reduction in rental supply or significant increase in rents in either of the areas. Furthermore, I'm confident that the forthcoming Renters Reform Bill, which will end no-fault evictions, will further protect tenants and help to mitigate these concerns. So in conclusion, the proposed selective licensing scheme represents a targeted evidence-based intervention to improve housing conditions for thousands of residents living in some of the most deprived areas of our city. And the consultation process has been thorough and the feedback received has been instrumental in helping us shape the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lennox. Councillor Lamb, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Well, I can't support this one as it is. What it seems to me is while the aim and objective of this over several years has been laudable and perfectly understandable to try and improve conditions for people living in really poor quality, private rented homes, the, it feels as if it assumes all landlords are bad landlords and providing a bad service to their tenants. And I simply do not believe that is the case and the evidence doesn't back it up. I would contend the majority of landlords are very responsible, do a good job, care about their tenants. Like most people who set up in business, you know that the way to keep your business sustainable, thriving and growing is to look after your customers. In this case, the tenants are the customers. That is not to say there aren't bad landlords in the city, there absolutely are, that are providing really poor quality accommodation, often to vulnerable people who have to take what they can get. And it's quite right to try and deal with that, but this feels like an incredibly blunt instrument to do it. I don't see any evidence that what we've done so far has worked and has actually improved conditions for those vulnerable tenants in poor quality housing. It's effectively a tax on everybody else. It's clear from the correspondence of meetings I've had with variety of people that It's clear from the correspondence and meetings I've had with a variety of people that this is really strongly opposed by the responsible tenants, the responsible landlords who equally want to see those who are irresponsible brought to book and made to get up to the same standards that they practise. It is another example of this council doing things to people, not working with them. And I've seen that repeatedly in correspondence, that I've been copied in many times to people wanting to meet you, councillor Lennox, that you wouldn't meet them to discuss their concerns. So I think this is one where the objective is right, the means of achieving it is simply not working, and it's time to think again, work properly with the sector, not to them, to try and address the real issue, which is poor quality housing for people who often don't have any other choice.
Councillor Lennox, please.
Very interested to hear you say that there's no evidence to support that the improvements that were made in the previous scheme areas. I know the report was long, but there was an incredible amount of evidence that was, has been very well quantified as a result of many visits, as a result of work across children and families. The Housing and Health Steering Group has taken great interest in this scheme. We've had people who have been, once our teams have got over the threshold, have been signposted to many, many other services, including employment and skills. We've had people be put back in touch with health services for their children. There is also all of the evidence pertaining to criminality that's been uncovered in some of these properties, massive amounts of drugs taken out of the system. There's case reports in the, there's case studies in the report, which describe officers entering a home which is split into five separate rooms, and they have one person living in one of the rooms, which is separate to the one that was licensed, because other rooms had no floors in them, and there's wires hanging out of the walls. And there are multiple, multiple case studies in the reports. The logic as to why these areas are being considered, which is not a blunt instrument, I've explained that these are part of the legislation that the national government has in place to allow us to target the powers at areas, and as I explained, this is high deprivation and a high concentration of privately rented homes. It's not a blunt instrument that assumes all landlords are bad. As I mentioned in my introduction, as is covered in the report, we do, we do work with landlords in the city, we work very well with them, we have something called the Leeds Rental Standard, which as a landlord, people can sign up to, to work with us around the standards expected, and to work with us on targeting exactly the kind of issues explained in the report, and exactly the kind of issues that these powers are designed to allow us to address in a, in a more proactive way, if we don't get the engagement and if we find problem properties. In terms of it being a business, landlords being a business, the charge, the fee for the licence, consider it a business cost, one thousand, not got the figure right in front of me, apologies, it's around a thousand, one thousand one hundred pounds, I believe. Mark will be able to correct me in a minute if I've said one of the wrong numbers. That over five years is a cost that you are undertaking as a landlord to invest in, making sure that your property is compliant, it is safe, and it is making sure the people who live there, who, as you mentioned, are some of the most vulnerable and low-paid people across the city, live in decent accommodation. We know how important housing is to the health and the fundamental opportunity for people who are, who are on low incomes or who are living in more deprived areas. I don't think you've read the report, I don't think you've accurately considered the report, I think you are making a point just to try and, try and appear to be in opposition to something which is going to make a significant difference to thousands and thousands of people in the city.
Councillor Lam, please.
Yep, thank you. Well, you're wrong, I have read the report, I have read the evidence. You didn't answer any of the questions or points that I actually made. You've made lots of assumptions about what I think and other people think. So I'd contend perhaps you didn't listen to what I said, rather than me not reading the report. So the questions I'd have for you, councillor Lennox, if you're working so closely with the landlords and agents, why are you proceeding with something they're so strongly opposed to? And the second question, why won't you meet with them? And you're quite right, this is a cost of doing business, and like all costs of doing business, they get passed on to the customers. So this is driving up, up people's rents as well, because it will ultimately be the tenants that have to pay the cost of this, as they would with any other cost of doing business. So as I said, I'm quite happy to work with you to try and achieve the objective. I'd hope you'd take some constructive criticism on board, because I simply don't recognise the picture that you've painted, and I think many people in Leeds wouldn't recognise the picture that you've just painted.
Councillor Lennox, please.
There's been extensive engagement with landlords, they've had communication with myself, they've had communication with the service and the officers, and they've had communication with councillor Galton as Chair of the Environment, Housing and Community Scrutiny Board. They've had multiple explanations and long, long-form answers to emails and questions that they've sent. The reason, one of the reasons that I have not personally met with the small number of landlords who have insisted on, who have requested to meet me, is that they have had a consultation process, which is the legal required consultation process. As you're aware, they brought a, they brought a deputation to council, which was followed up through the directorship in the way that all deputations are. I also have not been able to go and meet every single private tenant in the city. And therefore, it would be a completely, completely skewed, skewed representation to be sat in front of a number of landlords, impressing on me their desire not to have to comply with this national legislation versus the thousands upon thousands of people who are living in underpar housing in the city, in private rented accommodation. I have not, and it was you who said that all landlords are tied with the same brush here, I've explained that the Leeds Rental Standard is a large organisation of landlords that work with officers to establish what decent standard private rented sector housing looks like in the city. They have had massive input into this in the previous scheme and as this has been developed. The other thing that you've, sorry, remind me what your first point was, that was about not meeting with people, I've explained about that. Your first point was?
My first point was if you're working so closely with the landlords and their agents, why are you ignoring the fact that so many of them are strongly opposed to the proposals as they sit today?
I wouldn't like to assume why certain landlords would be opposed to these proposals as they sit today, but we have, have massive support from other land, many other landlords in the city, and actually, the National Landlords Association, which is the national body for landlords in the country, has not submitted any kind of objection to this, having been fully briefed on it and discussed with it as this has been developed.
James, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just want to come in and support councillor Lennox's view in terms of this proposal being highly evidenced within the paperwork and the work that we've done. This has been a piece of work that we've done over a long period of time, with significant collaboration with the sector, with significant involvement with Scrutiny Board, which we've been two or three times, I think, during this process to make sure that they can contribute. When you look at the evidence base and just to look at some of the specifics, paragraph twenty-one on page four, three, five, for example, refers to the previous scheme in Beeston and Hare Hills, and refers to the fact that eighty-five percent of the licensed homes that were visited were found not to be legally compliant during the process of the last regime. Right up until the end of the scheme, inspections were still revealing people having to live in homes which were not compliant, and that was five years after introducing the standards. And due to those non-compliances, we issued over four hundred civil penalties during that course. So whilst I'm sure there are, and I know there are lots of good landlords in the city, those statistics, I think, clearly emphasise the scale of the challenges that we've got if we are to get residents in our private rented sector to live in the best quality of accommodation possible. What we also need to recognise is that in terms of the private rented sector, our powers are quite limited overall, and selective licensing, which is a regime under regulation and government regulation, is very clear in terms of where it can be applied and in what circumstances and how it can be applied, which again is detailed within the paperwork.
Thank you. I'm bringing councillor Lam and then councillor Lennox.
As my final question, because we're obviously not going to exactly agree on this one, but the biggest landlord in the city is this council. How many of our homes are compliant?
Councillor Lennox, please.
Compliant with what?
Well, Mr Rogers just said the, I can't remember what percentage it was of homes that weren't compliant, so eighty-five percent. So on the same basis, how many Leeds City Council homes are not compliant?
And councillor Lam may, I'm sure is aware that recently, the Regulator of Social Housing, which is a national body, last April had its powers and its scope enhanced to inspect local authority landlords and registered social landlords in a similar way that Ofsted does. That means that we've had to, we've not had an inspection yet, but what that means is that we've had to do an incredible amount of work to assess the, our stock, our stock condition, we've had to do incredible amount of work around our energy efficiency in our stock. We are held to an extremely high standard, much higher than the standard of private rented properties. And we are currently undergoing an enhanced programme of stock condition surveys to ensure that we have an accurate picture of our stock, and to ensure that we've got a capital programme and a programme going forward to bring our stock up to E P C C in time for the regulator to ask that of us. We are constantly looking at stock condition, we have voids, less than one percent of our stock is currently in void, and when we, as you know, when we do void stock, that means that it gets completely checked, it gets completely assessed, and any improvements that are required are made, then it can be let to a family that needs to live in it or an individual that needs to live in it. We are held to a much higher standard than private landlords, landlords are on a national basis. And as James has explained, what these powers in this scheme and the previous scheme have done is allowed us as a council to make an intervention, to make sure that as many possible, as many people as possible in the private rented sector live in the quality of homes that Leeds City Council can provide to people in the public social housing sector. I just also wanted to pick up a point that was made in the last contribution, that you had said that this has resulted in increased, increased rents for people. There is no, there is no evidence that indicates that the areas under the previous scheme have gone up in rent any further than any other areas nearby or anywhere across the city. Rent rises across the city have been largely in line with each other, no matter what area you're looking at.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, again.
Thank you. It was a very long answer to a very simple question and didn't answer the question, which was what is the proportion of Leeds City Council homes? That is the equivalent number to the eighty-five percent that Mr Rogers referred to.
Didn't come prepared with that answer today because I wasn't sure that we were going to be talking about social housing and council housing, because we're here to talk about private rented sector, but I can get the figure for you. However, as I've explained, the compliance is completely different, it's a different picture, we are, we are monitored on completely different levels of compliance, so I can give you a briefing about that.
Thank you. Any more contributions from anybody? Councillor Hayden, please.
Very quickly, and councillor Lennox has talked very articulately about it, but the, the link to families living in poverty, which we've discussed earlier in, in this meeting, and living in inadequate private house, housing, and the life chances that it curtails for those children. So I really welcome this, this scheme, and I'm glad it's been rolled out further. So it will, it will mean that we have children, and it's frightening, and we heard it the other, we heard it on Friday, didn't we, that nationally, that children who are living in inadequate housing, and what it does to their health, their education, their life chances, their future employment, their life expectancy is horrific, and therefore, I really welcome this, and I'm glad we as a city are doing something to protect our most vulnerable children and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, I don't see anybody else wanted to come in. I am going to turn to the recommendations on page four hundred and thirty-one. Councillor Lam, can you let us know what you're doing, please?
Yes, well, like everybody here, I desperately want to see the quality of private rented housing improved and to see the bad landlords, who are a minority in my view, held to account. I just simply don't think this is the way to do it, so I will not be supporting the paper.
Okay, thank you. I take it everybody else is happy with the paper? That's great, the recommendations are agreed, and that brings us to the end of the meeting. Thank you, everybody.